Evening, we have some special guests with us as well. And first order of business, a reminder, and I need to remind myself, turn your cell phones on silent so that they don't disrupt the meeting. And soon as I do that, we can stand and say pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome everyone this evening, as well as those watching on YouTube later on. I'm going to start out with some introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor. And to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Peter Vickery, Claudia Lacy, and then Brian Govern. And on the end, we have our city engineer Allison Falsky with WSB. Then we have our director of public works, Gary Peters. And then we have our assistant administrator Paula Baumann. To my right, I have our city administrator Jasper Krugel. Brian Grum is our finance director. And next to Brian, we have David Abel, who is our community development director. And then on the end, we have our chief of police Craig Squires. With that, and then do we have anybody remotely participating?
Yeah.
Anne Meyerhoff? Anne Meyerhoff is taking notes. She is our city clerk.
Sarah Sensala.
And Sarah Sensala is our city attorney. They are both participating via internet, whatever it's called. All right, you can tell how old I am. All right. With that, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or you wish to make otherwise? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern. I'll give it to you. Mr. Govern, all those in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we move on to our special presentations. Like I said, we have some special, a special guest here this evening. Marge Beard is from Three Rivers Park District. She is our district commissioner. Welcome, Marge, and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for the warm welcome, Mayor. I appreciate being here. So I am Marge Beard with Three Rivers Park District. I represent, I serve as a commissioner on the board, and I represent District One. And District One includes the residents of the city of Minnetrista. So it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Do I just click? Look at that. Here we go. So we're going to start off a little bit of background. Who is Three Rivers? So Three Rivers was, it's a park district that was established in 1957 by the state legislature. So we are a standalone local unit of government. We are run by a board of seven commissioners. We have five elected commissioners and two appointed commissioners. And I serve in one of the elected roles. We have over 25 parks and park reserves, 27,000 acres of land, which is over 36 square miles, 175 miles of regional trail. And regional trail is typically that trails, the trails that are outside our parks, that connect our parks together. They're easily identifiable because they're paved and they have a yellow dash line. So if you're riding around anywhere and you see that yellow dash line, you can pretty much count on that's a Three Rivers trail. In addition, we have another 300 miles of trails within our parks. And those may be paved, but many times they're dirt trails or grass trails or somewhere, if you want to put on your hiking boots and get out there, we've got a place for you. We get 16 million visitors a year, which is quite significant because that's more than twice our state's population just in our Three Rivers parks themselves.
Almost three times.
So what's happening at Three Rivers? So the most exciting thing that has happened to us in really a long time was our opening of our Mississippi Gateway Regional Park. The Mississippi Gateway Park is on the Mississippi and Brooklyn Park. And you may have known it years ago as the Coon Rapids Regional, a Coon Rapids Dam Regional Park. We changed the name and we embarked on a significant effort to really redevelop that park. There was a ton of community, community input on that. And I'm happy to share with you a couple of highlights. The first on the left is the Gateway Center. So when you approach, the Gateway Center really serves as a visitor center as well as a nature center. There's a lot of classrooms inside. There's a downstairs area for us to move boats in and out, to move kids and school groups in boot, in boots, to get them out in the river. The whole purpose of having a park on the Mississippi River is to get into the river and get people exposed to the river. So we're very excited about the opportunities there. Or left, if you go to the park, you'll see an area we call the Mini Mississippi. And it's just that it is a reconstruction of, looks like a river. It has water that flows through it. And it really, the target is the young toddlers. They're really too little to get into or really close to the Mississippi. And it has proved to be a very exciting place for them to be. I'm glad we built that.
Isn't as muddy as the Mississippi?
No mud there, no mud yet unless it's brought in from somewhere. But it's really been a hit with the little kids and the parents. And on the bottom right is our Treetops Trail. So it's just what you imagine. It's a elevated walkway that connects to our Gateway Center, comes out the Gateway Center, and you're elevated in the trees as you, you walk around and you come out, go out to a vista where you really overlook the wetlands. And it's the, I've heard from the birders that they really like being able to be up there and closer to the birds. So it's been a great success for us. Closer to Minnetrista, one of the big projects we completed is that Lake Minnetonka Regional Park. And it was the restoration of the Schmid farmhouse. The Doug Schmid approached us, his great grandfather Frederick Schmid. This was his farm and his farmhouse. And we embarked together on a project to restore that. It's self-guided and it's available and open now. So next time you're cruising through Lake Minnetonka Regional Park, you know, take a stop and take a walk through the park. There's some historical markers in there. It's very interesting. The next project closer to home here is the improving of the water quality at Whale Tail Lake. And Whale Tail Lake is the lake just over yonder associated with Gale Woods Farm. And we have done an alum treatment, an alum substance. I'm not a water expert, but a substance that binds to the phosphorus and makes the phosphorus land on the bottom of the lake. And it clear, clears the water of the lake. We've had great success with it. Right now, our numbers are looking good. We have another alum treatment scheduled for spring of 2026. And if the lake can hold the numbers we have now, we would be able to, in two years, be able to take it off the impaired waters list throughout our state, which is quite an achievement and it's hard to do. So it's something we're really working on here locally. The next project, also sort of natural resources based, is at Carver Park. And it's a partnership we have with Ducks Unlimited. There's a shallow lake. I do that? Oh, there's a shallow lake that would drain, and it's ideal for waterfowl ducks, okay? And we installed a water control mechanism that allows staff to control the flow of water into this very shallow lake. Or you might think of it as really like a wetland that you can, you can see the difference. On the left is the project, once it was complete. And on the right is what it looked like in the spring. So it quite filled in and you can see that ducks would just love that. But today, I'm here for the excitement to make sure everyone in Minnetrista knows about Fall Fest. That's this weekend, that's October 11th and 12th, from 10:00 to 4:00 at Gale Woods Park. It is a free event. It is outstanding. It is one of our highlights of the year. And it's a great way to showcase the city of Minnetrista as visitors come, come through your city on their way to, to Gale Woods. They will be free, the barns will be open, the animals will be out. There'll be music, there'll be food trucks. We also have sheep herding dogs. There's sheep herding trials. It's fantastic. It's very interesting. I went to that last year. I didn't really know anything about it. It was quite, quite interesting. And it's just a great day. Hopefully, the weather will be cool, but hold out nice. I drove through Gale Woods on my way here, and I see they've already got the parking all lined up. Like staff have been working really hard.
And the sign, sign is out, the sign is out.
I saw the sign. I saw the parking. They're, you know, getting ready to go. And it's going to be quite an event. There'll be vendors there as well.
What time does it begin? What's the time? 10?
Question. It is 10. Thank you. Very good lead there, council member. So it's this weekend, the 11th to 12th, 10:00 to 4:00 at Gale Woods. I encourage you to stop by and bring a neighbor or two because it's going to be a great time.
Thank you.
So with that, Mayor.
Marge, I just want to make one comment. So the Whale Tail, actually, the project there was a partnership between Pinehurst Creek Watershed and the city of Minnetrista. So just wanted to point that out, that we love the work that you're doing out there. And it's a great partnership because we really appreciate, as you know, whale, well, you might not know, Whale Tail is wholly incorporated or wholly surrounded by Minnetrista. So it's wholly within Minnetrista. So we really appreciate those partnerships.
Thank you, Mayor, for pointing that out.
Yeah.
Marge, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
How does someone reach out to you regarding like the, what did you call the lake? Whale Tail Lake, you called it a?
Alum.
I'm sorry. You said it was on a certain list?
So the impaired waters.
Impaired. How does someone reach out to you about a lake they think is impaired or, or a body of water? Did they just call?
So you can certainly call me or send me an email. I won't have the answer, but I certainly know the people who do. Or they know the people who do, and we'd be, we'd be able to get you an answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, it's our pleasure. We pride ourselves in partnering with our cities and other organizations to really, we can't make things happen on our own. So, yeah, thank you so much. I have an answer for you.
Thank you, Marge. Any other questions? I'll see you Wednesday night?
See you then.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So I don't think we have anybody sign up under persons to be heard. So we'll move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any we have to remove?
I did have a couple of questions about item D.
D is approved claims?
No, the adoption certification.
A, B, C, D.
Unpaid.
Adoption for unpaid utility fees. You want to remove that for discussion? We can do that?
Okay, yeah, it's gonna be a brief discussion.
All right. So otherwise, we have A, approved work session meeting minutes from September 15th, 2025. B is approved city council regular meeting minutes from September 15th, 2025. C is a resolution to approve claims. Then we'll move on to E. E is a resolution to support the acquisition of 6801 County Road Number 15 by Three Rivers Park District. F is a resolution to approve the front yard and Lake Shore setback variance at 3275 County Road 44. And G is a resolution approving the Minnesota, the WACA wetland replacement application for West Tonka High School improvements. And H is accept the grant agreement for funding of a ballistic shield and transport bag. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, F, G, and H?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So, Mr. Govern, you had a question on the adoption of the certification.
Yeah, and so I was just reading through it. And I see that there's a 5% per annum interest rate that goes in there and a $30 administrative fee. And I just wanted to raise, do we feel like that is sufficient? Because I know the prime rate's about seven and a quarter, seven and a half right now. And it looks like about half the, half the properties on this list instead, looks like they're just paying their bills this way. And I assume that we'd want to discourage that.
Um, yeah, council member govern, we've, the 5% has been a pretty common. I mean, with the rates being where they are, I mean, I guess depending on, you know, if you're looking at the prime rate or more like a Fed funds rate or something. I mean, somewhere, you know, obviously between four, you know, like you referenced 7%. I mean, so I think we, the 5% interest and the $30 admin fee seems to be pretty fair in what we've charged annually, I guess, as far as for these delinquent accounts. I mean, they, these accounts have already been hit with, you know, late fees.
Late fees, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
So this would be on top of that.
It'd be on top. Yeah, basically, it's just the time that they're paying them with their property taxes through, because it's going to be certified there. So then the interest is just for another 14 months through the 2026 property taxes. So.
But they have to pay all of this, this amount?
Yeah.
It's not spread out over 20 years or anything like that?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, basically, a one-year assessment or whatever to get it caught up next year or.
Okay. And then the, and the county doesn't charge us anything for that collection?
Um, they have like a small, like nominal fee they, they charge for special assessments for the list we send down. But it's, it's pretty much that's sort of what the admin fee covers, some of that plus some of our staff time. So.
Okay, okay.
That was all I had?
All right. So then would you like to make a motion to approve the item number D, which is adopt the certification for unpaid utility fees?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
2026 taxes. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, 5-0. So next, we'll move on to our business items. And we have consider approval of the auth, of the authorization of a 16th police officer. Is that number one? Yes, it is. Going to hand this over to Craig, Craig, Chief.
All right. Madam Mayor, council members. As you know, we have an officer out on long-term leave. And we expect to have another officer out on child leave early next year. With the upcoming Family Leave Act, employees will be able to take up to 20 weeks of leave in situations such as childbirth and serious medical conditions. As a 24/7 police department, we would like to prepare for this act and just as importantly, for future growth. From this, from basically the above, the 16th officer conversation was started. A 16th officer would help us cover these long-term abstices, prepare for growth, and allow us to have at least two officers working the road at all times when we're fully staffed and not accommodating the sick or vacation time. This would, of course, increase officer safety patrol coverage and make our response times even faster. But also allow us to distribute added duties that police officers have across the board. Onboarding a police officer can take months. So adding a 16th officer position will help us strategically stay ahead of any unforeseen shortages while still increasing coverage. So I thank you, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. So I guess a question I would have, and maybe you would bring this back, since this is an unbudgeted item, could staff then bring back where we would? And we can't increase the levy. So I'm in favor of this because I think safety is, is well worth it, especially in a large community, a growing community. Where would we get the money from? So do you have any idea what that would look like and where it would come from?
Yeah, I think Finance Director myself can kind of take team this. I think tonight, what we're, what we're looking for is just to see what the appetite is to authorize a 16th officer. What that would then allow us to do is to post the position and see if there's any candidates out there. Because as you can imagine, they've been here for three and a half years. We've had.
It's a long time.
Pull-up, you know, personnel at the police department for three weeks out of those three and a half years. So we've always, it seems like we've always had a police officer queued up to be hired. What the 16th officer authorization would do would be allow us to post it now and, and see what is out there for candidates. Now, as far as the funding mechanisms, I mean, we really have kind of three levers that we can move around. And this could be in the form of a budget amendment in 2026, since, as the mayor alluded, we can't move the levy up. But what we'd have to look at is potentially using fund balance, potentially reducing the street CIP or the equipment levy allocation. So those are the three ones that are, you know, have funding in there that maybe we can move down the road. But keep in mind, anything you do related to this, we're going to have to make up for it in 2027. So we're going to have to include that in the full 2027 budget. So we don't know who's out there. We don't, I don't think Chief Squires has any candidates out there. But in the meantime, it would, it would be nice to be able to post the position, to be able to see what's out there. And then if we do get close, then I think we could have conversations about where city council wants to get the funding from. Because we can't really, the only thing we could do in 2026 right now would be to move some of those things around, which might be premature because that candidate may not actually exist.
So I just wanted to make the council aware that we'll have to do some shifting if, if we would like to go down this path, which I really would recommend we, we consider. As you know before, when we tried to hire, it took us, what, a year? I mean, it, it takes a long time. So we might not even get anybody on board. And that's why I think Mr. Krugel is suggesting that we first see if there's candidates out there, and then we address the budgeting of it. But keep in mind, roads, CIP, or fund balance might have to be impacted, or maybe a little bit in all three.
The only context probably on fund balances, we know through the budget process this summer, we're already projecting to be at our minimum per city council policy in the general run. So I don't know if that's the best option really either, I guess. Or council would have to have discussions, I guess, or.
Yeah, so we'll.
Just to know that we've been going below.
Is there perhaps a chance, maybe even that this officer that is on maternity leave may not come back?
There's two different, so the maternity leave is a husband.
Okay.
The other one is on extended leave.
Yes. So, so yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the, the second person on leave won't be on leave till probably around January. But the first person on leave, yes, correct, is on long-term leave, and we're not sure.
They might not come back. Correct.
Right, right.
I think we have to start looking. Okay. Brian, you're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Is it possible to push some things into the next year to raise money and instead of digging into a balance?
That's why I think we are looking, we could shift some funds from the CIP and industry.
Push it off.
Right.
I think it's a good idea to start looking to.
Okay, okay. All right.
So just, just to be clear, you will likely see a job posting for a police officer. And so it won't be a surprise to you. And then if we start getting a candidate, then we will start talking about what this means. Because it could be months. Who knows? But we'll, we'll keep communicating and working through the Personnel Committee to, to keep this moving along. So you will see a job posting here probably in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So next, we'll consider workout on duty policy. I think that's the chief again.
It is, yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, members of council, we had kind of talked about this at a work session before and then brought it before committee with some really helpful suggestions. But overall, the Minnetrista Public Safety Department places a high value in employee wellness, which is the foundation of why we're bringing this policy before you. Workout on duty is not only good for physical and mental health, but it's also an excellent retention tool as most of our surrounding hightech county agencies have such a policy. Increasing our proposed policy, we reviewed workout on duty policies from West Tenepin, Wayzata, Midana, Southlake, Eden Prairie, Plymouth, and Hopkins Police Departments. And we also had our policy reviewed by the city attorney. And a company waiver was also reviewed by our city attorney. This policy takes public safety first and foremost into account. The policy states that only one officer on duty can work out at a time. If two officers are working out, it basically means if two officers are working out, the one officer in the gym still has to be in uniform. Can obviously take his vest off and take some of the gear off, but it's going to be right there in the gym. And there must be no calls impending. All paperwork needs to be completed before working out, and the radar, radio must be monitored at all times. Anytime spent in the gym is deducted from the officer's existing paid lunches or breaks. So there'll be no additional break time or lunches given to the officer in this policy. If officer chooses, they can use some time to work out and some time to eat. But anytime they're working out is already time allocated to them per contract. A policy like this allows an officer to gain health benefits rather than watching TV or whatnot during breaks.
Or eating.
But they can eat quick, protein shake. Officers can still work out after duty, but with trainings, court, and 12-hour shifts, this can be difficult to do and still get proper rest. While there are some risks to working out and getting hurt in the gym, law enforcement leaders feel the benefit of working out to outweigh the risks. So I'll thank you and stand for any questions.
Thank you.
So the Personnel Committee, we had this for two meetings. We asked lots and lots of questions. I had chief go back with regard to work comp and our exposure on that. We will have exposure for work comp if they do allege an injury. Even if they sign the waiver, it's still there. The big, so I believe the consensus was we're going to do it, or we recommended approving it on trial basis and then having chief come back to us in about six months with who's using it, how often they're using it, and if anyone is abusing the policy.
Sounds good. Okay. So you need a motion to pass this policy?
We do. And also just a point of order, we'd like a motion, the 16th officer to.
Oh, you, okay.
So you can do, you can do them.
Would do both?
Yep.
All right.
That'd be fine.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the authorization of a 16th police officer and to consider the workout policy on, the workout on duty policy. Is there a motion to approve those two items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern. Any further questions? We're looking forward to healthy police officers. All right. With that, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we're going to move on to our water treatment plant. And we received three bids. We have Aaron Volmer here this evening with us to go over that and some discussion. I understand, so what we're going to do here, there may be some people that have some, that are here this evening that might have a few questions. Aaron is going to go through his presentation. The city council can ask him questions. And afterwards, I will give a brief. If anybody has some brief questions, you can come forward and ask those at that time. So with that, Aaron, take it away.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm back again. I don't have a lot of presentations, but I'm mostly just providing the results of the bid opening from last week. So, actually, two weeks ago, sorry. So we'll, we'll review the bid results. We'll talk a little bit more about the bid alternatives that were included and then some other considerations and discussion. I don't know if you can read that, but we received three bids from contractors in the industry. We did have four contractors attend the pre-bid. So one contractor decided not to bid, but we did get three. So we were happy with the three that we received. Magny Construction was the low bid. And, and all contractors provided the correct paperwork for, for the bid opening. So Magny, their low bid is $21,329,000. They provided a, so there was two, two bid alternates. Bid alternate one, which was removal of the clear well. So we have about 400,000 gallons outside of the building footprint below ground that provides finished water that we would pump into the distribution system. So bid alternate one was to remove that from the bid and just build the facility with a smaller clear well that would be inside the footprint of the facility. So the results for that, if I'll back up.
How much is the clear well inside the facility?
About 200,000.
200? Okay.
Thinking total, I think it's actually 660,000.
I think it's 650 or something total. Yeah.
So, so it's about 200,000, 250,000 in, internal to the facility. So to remove that, Magny Construction offered a $1.655 million deduct to the contract. There was a bit of a discrepancy when they entered their bid. They entered it as a positive number. We instructed them to enter it as a negative number. So it's not great, but we could work through that if we needed to. But at this point, we're not recommending that we move forward with awarding bid alternate one at all. Anyways, we would just keep the base bid.
So the, the base bid is 21,329, including, that includes the clear well. Yeah.
We don't want that. We would, you know, we would reduce the price by 1.6 million. Bid alternate two was the additional architectural treatments on the outside of the facility. Put to that. So this is what the additional architectural treatments would look like. And so this was 281,000, I believe, for bid alter number, number two. So that would be on top of the base bid cost that we would pay in addition to add the, the larger bump out on the upper portion and change some of the texture and coloring to the precast. So that was 281,000.
Okay.
So our engineer's estimate was 20 million. So I was wrong, unfortunately. I don't like being low, but it does happen once in a while. So the, the range between the three bids was really pretty good. 21.3 million up to 24.7 million. So we're, we're happy with the, the spread on the bids, which essentially means it was a good plan set. They were able to accurately bid it. But we were slightly lower than the three contractors. So overall.
Aaron, are you seeing project estimates coming in higher than you expect? I mean, is, is this unusual? Is it, are you seeing this now?
Projects are hard. Underground work is starting to get a lot better because of the slowdown in some of the development. But, but facility work is still, there are just not that many contractors out there that do this work.
That was my next question. Because you had four contractors, one decided not to bid it. So we have three. Have you ever worked with Magny Construction before?
Yeah, actually, we're finishing a project with them right now in Missouri. So they're building a 10 million gallon per day.
Okay.
Plant, very similar to yours.
Okay.
That they're currently in the process of finishing.
So they're going.
Good. It's, it's a little behind schedule, but overall they're a very good contractor. We've worked with them in the past. Great staff. Likely the staff that finished Ramsey will, will transition.
Okay, over here. And then when you talked with them, or I'm assuming when you talk with them, what are you proposing for start time? When would they be starting?
So I, we have not been able to get a clear schedule from Magni yet. But, but I did talk to Rice Lake Construction, who is number two, and they, they indicated that they, they did not intend to start this fall. They plan to start in the spring.
In the spring?
And given how close we are to winter, unfortunately, I don't think Magni would start this, this fall either.
So they would start in the spring?
Likely we'll spend this fall and winter ordering equipment, getting our paperwork in order, reviewing submittals so that they can start strong in spring.
Okay, all right.
What does that do to the overall timeframe?
Nothing. It was included in the, so we're very clear about substantial and final completion dates in the bid documents. That hasn't changed. We actually, we, we shifted it out one month because of the bidding delay. They gave them credit for the, the bid opening delay. But they're able to start as soon as we issue a notice to proceed.
So when do you think this plant would be online, up and running?
So the current substantial completion date, I have a schedule towards the end. I can flip to. So our revised substantial completion date is January 30th of 2028, so that winter, with a final completion date, completion date of July 1st.
Okay.
So substantial essentially means it's of beneficial use to the city. So it's able to operate and produce water. So we would have it available for the summer of 2028.
Okay. And so then another question. If we, we have some other developments on the horizon potentially. And have you been made privy to those? And how are we, how would we be doing in terms of water quantity for those developments?
So you probably can't read this, but.
No, we can't.
The chart on the left are the projections that we used to develop your long-term kind of water supply planning effort. And I can read it. Your currently, our current, your current estimated population in 2025 was about 4,500 people.
That are on water. We want to make that clear. That are on water.
Development that I've been made aware of is about 400 homes.
Okay.
So at a 2.7 per capita per unit, that's about 1,000 people.
Okay.
So that would, if we add those additional thousand people, that would put us at about our 2030 water demand projection based on, on our original projections. So.
No, but I'm thinking if they come online or start coming online, obviously before then, they're not going to be completely built out by 2030. But when they start coming online, we'll have sufficient water capacity.
If you build the water plant, correct.
Okay.
If you don't, I would recommend reconsidering. So frankly, wells four and five are, are not heavily used wells. Your water, your current water plant is already stressed on, on summer demand. We have wells eight and nine that we've drilled, but they're not connected and they don't have the ability to pump into the system. So really your system is, is essentially maxed out without this water plant.
Right. And, and sometimes I know that Gary is tearing out his hair because he's worried that, yeah. So, yeah. And then just kind of for public information, this will remove manganese and iron and will be able to meet the Minnesota health standards. So, okay. Counsel, any other, okay, so the other thing I want to point out is we have been trying to get bonding money from, from the state. And we've tried and tried and tried. And we haven't been successful for various reasons. One reason this past year, they did not pass a bonding bill. So, so if, if you wanted to wait and try and get money from the state, we would have to wait quite a while and probably have to completely rebid this. And, and then, and then here's the, here's the catch. It might be more expensive because, probably would be more expensive because then we have certain obligations that we have to follow based on state statutes. So there's a lot of other steps you have to go through. And then you also have to buy, there's a lot of different purchasing options and, or requirements. So it might actually drive the, the cost of the project up. There have been projects where they have requested bonding money and they've received the bonding money. But because of the requirements, it didn't make any sense to actually take the bonding money because it actually put, put the project up higher than what the money was that they got. If that makes any sense. So I don't think we should wait because if we wait, it's going to put the project out yet another year or two. And we don't know what the market will do and what pricing will do. So.
And there's no guarantee we get any money from the state.
Right.
Can I add one item to that?
Yes, please.
So regarding the bonding, so, so state bonding, there's state bonding money in federal.
Right.
Federal, we would have to bid the project in a unique ways and we didn't do that because we weren't eligible. In, in state bonding money, actually Ramsey, the project we're finishing with Magni right now, they, they awarded it without state money. They, they started construction and then they actually applied for state money after the fact.
Okay.
And they were awarded, I think it was about $3 million. And as part of that, we actually changed order in prevailing wage requirements to the project to allow them to accept that funding.
Okay.
So and Magni was the contractor that worked through that with us. So essentially we can continue with this project awarded and you can still seek funding money. And if you're lucky enough to receive it, we can work with Magni at that point.
And we can see how much money that they're going to, that we're going to get. We might get 1 million, which might not even make sense at that point, but you're right, we should, we'll continue.
Continue and you just have to modify the contractual requirements of the project to meet state requirements. So you have to meet prevailing wage requirement, which this project does not because it's city funded. Going off of memory, the change order, additional cost to the project to, to modify it to achieve prevailing wage was about $600,000.
Okay, so the 3 million.
It was worth it to them to make that modification. And that was about a $32 million water plant. So if we roughly scale it, it's 22, so we're talking 400,000, probably.
Okay. So. So we'll keep trying. And I know I've been in contact and Jasper has been in contact with Senator Ann Johnson Stewart and with our representative Andrew Myers. So, and I know they're very supportive of it. So we'll, we'll continue. We'll keep trying if they have a bond. I think they're talking about a bonding bill. So, yeah, it's, yeah. If you don't, if counsel is okay, I'm going to ask the audience if they have any questions. And then, and then we'll bring it back to counsel. Is there anybody that has a question regarding the treatment plant? If you do. Okay, can you please, you're going to have to come to the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jim Worthington, 4634 Newcastle Curve, strange name, a curve. But anyhow, we moved here from Oklahoma a year ago. And we were very concerned about the racial proposals and we talked to Gary and Jasper and we had a meeting. It was nice to see you respond, okay? Did we get everything we wanted? I don't know, but it's nice to have it happen, okay? Because some places you get shut out, you don't get to hear from anybody. So we just want to make that comment. We hope you proceed with it. And when we get all the berm up and all the trees up, people will say, what is that building? I can't tell it what it is. It's behind those trees. That's all I want is thank you.
Thank you. And yes, we do, we do listen to our residents. So we don't always, you don't always get everything you want. But we, we try our best and I think this is a really, really good solution. And I think, I think you'll be happy. You'll be happy to get really good, clean drinking water too. So, so let's talk about the, oh, anybody else?
Kelly, Aaron's 4654 Wolfberry Curve. I'm curious, but until 2040 sticks out to me like. And then we acknowledged it could only last us until 2030 with additional development. So would we potentially be having to build another one of these?
Okay, I'll let Aaron, no.
2030 is without this.
Yeah. Maybe Aaron could answer this. He's talking about the storage capacity. Okay, so storage capacity without the external storage capacity, it's called a clear well, the external one. Then we would be out of storage capacity in 2030. And then, and then we would have to start thinking about building another tower somewhere. So in that, and again, Aaron, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We're probably looking at somewhere between 3 and 5 million dollars for, at that point, probably for another water tower. Okay, more, sorry. So we're, we're thinking the 16, the 1.6 million dollars is a pretty good deal. And this will take us out to 2050. 50. Again, it depends on development and how much comes and, and we'll be keeping an eye on that. But it should take us out into at least 2040. And in the meantime, we also will be rehabilitating the old Kings Point Water Tower. I should mention that. And I think, I, I think it's on our schedule for 2028. Is that correct? So if we can do it sooner, we'll do it sooner.
So is there that this parcel of land where this plant is going has space for that new tower that will eventually be needed? And would this be a site where it would be built?
No, because that's why we're putting the clear well in. So there's not a tower in your backyard.
So, so if we do nothing today?
Okay, hold on. I'm going to ask you to sit down because he has to come, he has to come to the microphone. So it gets on, yeah, go ahead.
So, so if we, if we do nothing today and we just provide, let's say we put another well in and we pump water into your system, we will need additional storage to accommodate water use in 2030. If we build the water plant as we're proposing with the, the clear well and the additional pumping capacity, that will push this need for storage out to at least 2040. If we can reduce our peaking factor, it'll push it out even further.
Yeah, okay.
The water plant is sized for 2,100 gallons a minute. You can see on that graphic, again, I apologize for the small text, but the, the green shaded area is the additional treatment capacity that this water plant provides. The gray shaded portion is what Kings Point can provide. The blue line at the very bottom, that's your average day demand. That's how much you guys use on a winter day. And then the green line that kind of goes up diagonally, that's what you use on a peak day, the hottest day of the summer. So as you can see, we're starting, our, our peak day is now above what Kings Point can provide. And Woodland Cove Water Plant will provide enough water to meet your peak day demand. And actually, as, if you look at that green shaded area where the green line intersects the top of that green shaded area, that's 2060. So we're able to meet your peak day demand at your projected growth rates until 2060. As far as additional storage, once we get to 2040, if you would need additional storage, we would likely not put additional storage at that park site. We, we don't typically want to put elevated storage near a water plant. You put it as far away from a water plant as possible. So maybe that's good news. But.
Bad news for somebody else.
To go, we're hoping we wouldn't need anything until 2040 and it will be in a distant portion of the city.
Well, I think, Aaron, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we talk about doing an elevated storage tower in the central area here? I thought it was over.
We did, up just right over here. And we, we've also talked about underground storage as well. Just to avoid the, the, the community conversation about a water tower.
Right. So that, again, it's in the future, but.
And it would not be on the Woodland Cove site.
No, okay.
So.
All right, all right.
For what it's worth, I think the aesthetic, you called it addition number two or something formal that I don't remember, would be well worth it. I think there's homes going in that will not be protected by the trees and berm. I'm personally very appreciative of the trees and berm. But there are a lot of houses that are being built looking head on into this thing. And until the trees get big enough, I think it would be a meaningful to the community to not have to look at the original proposal.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else? All right. So counsel, let's talk about the aesthetic, the 281,000. I'm going to, I'll start out because I'm not in favor of spending another $281,000. I did talk to Aaron about doing some other type of aesthetic improvements. And we could talk with the, with Magni and see what options we might have if it's the same architectural features that is in the original one, but maybe the colors or the stone or something is slightly different without any extra cost or very, very slight extra cost. Brian did, I think you did, ran some numbers and it's like $21,000 a year, 21,000 a year in additional annual payment. And we just got done talking about just an $11,000 additional payment for, for salaries and stuff that we didn't, we thought was too expensive. So this is a very, very expensive endeavor, in my opinion. And we are really, the water users are, are going to have to pay for it. And the current users as well as future users, we're going to do everything in our power to make it as feasible or as nice as possible. But to spend yet another $281,000, in my opinion, that's just strapping the water users with, with higher, with even, even higher fees than what we already have to do. And we're going to have to raise our fees. So that's, that's where I'm coming from. I think we can make it look nice, acceptable. It, it's a building. It's, it's an industrial building. And I think it will look okay as an industrial building. We'll soften it up with, with some landscaping and maybe some other colors. Or we'll see what, what we can get for, for the base price. That's just where I'm coming from.
I think just the darker colors in this version just make a big difference. Just the paint color can make such a big difference than the, I think the first one we saw was white or cream.
Well, it's creamy.
Very creamy.
Right.
It's darker, really just.
And that's what I was talking to Aaron about. If there's, if there's color options for the, for the bricks that are shown here, then maybe we can go with a darker one or whatever. So we can look at, look at those to make it a little more attractive.
I agree, especially when you consider that the $281,000 is actually $426,000 over 20 years. And since I'm going to be paying for that, I'm a no.
Let's say it's not 200 and something, it's 400.
It's $426,000, which is, you know, my house.
I respectfully disagree with my colleague.
All right. We like the respectful.
It's, I see it's basically 1% increase in cost to do right by a neighborhood that's going to have this building in their basically field of view forever. So I think it's, it's worth it to, for the small incremental cost to make it look homey as part of the neighborhood.
Homey, okay. So if we could do it without 281,000, like, you know, if we could change the color and make it a little warmer with. Well, I wish we could have all the people from that community in here and say, okay, are you all okay with the 400,000 over X amount of, I mean.
Well, I think the big thing is the project's already over budget. This would be great. I mean, if the project was under budget, yeah, no problem. It's over budget. Odds are it's going to use the contingency fund. AE2S went over budget on the first round, likely, possibly, probably, possibly going over again. Like there needs to be cutbacks and yeah, that's pretty. But the one that's on Kings Point Road now looks just fine. And as long as it works, we're going to put trees in, they're going to grow and we will, Gary's going to make sure they continue to grow and they don't look dead like the ones on Woodland Cove Parkway and Woodland Cove Boulevard. And it's, it's a water treatment plant. It's not a school. It's not a home. It needs to function.
Come on up, Peter. Hold on. No, sorry. I can't help myself. So hold on. Peter?
Yeah, I, it's an industrial building and it always will be. And I would rather put money into shielding it with more plantings and things like that that, you know, long-term will make it disappear. But I think, you know, this really doesn't do much for, for the aesthetics of it. So.
And it still looks industrial.
Yeah, it's, that's just what it is. And so I think shielding it is a much better route than spending money on facades.
Yeah. All right, one more comment. I think this gentleman here, yeah.
My name is Dave Carl. I live at 4622 Wolfberry Curve. I don't want to go over bridges we've already crossed. It's not a good use of everybody's time. So before my comment, I'd like to say thank you to Jasper and Gary. You guys have always been responsive, been very helpful. We appreciate it as a neighborhood. Thank you. You're an asset to our. you, you're an asset to our community. The one comment I had, 'cause I know we're talking aesthetics, and it is more money, and it's really, I'm, I'm, I don't, I won't see the plant from my house, but I know my neighbors well, and none of us anticipated it being there. Again, that's a bridge we've crossed, but if you would consider the money that we saved by not putting in the road, going through the wetland, building it up, doing all that, instead of going to a shorter road, there has to have been some savings there.
There really wasn't.
It was like 60,000, so it's, it's not as much.
So we, we had to go.
60,000.
Yeah, we had to go through more engineering, and, and that was a cost, and, and there's still a cost to, to change that road, too. So by the time everything is said and done, there was maybe a 50, I thought it was 50, 50, 60,000 savings, so, well, but like I said, I think we'll look at the, the coloring and see if, Erin, can you bring up the other one, the plain one? Because, and I don't know that you could put this up there, but if you had coloring like this on the other one, I think it would make a huge difference. And that's why I'm saying, rather than spending the 281,000, we could probably, see, look at, if, now, just if you can imagine, that lower part is darker. The whole, the whole thing would just change and, and look much, much more, less, a little, a little less industrial, so if we, we'll work on that.
I guess, if I may, can I provide some, some thoughts? The, because the alternative architectural was bid as a bit alternate, if we want, we, we have to make a decision tonight on base bid and the alternate, so to make that decision, we can't go back and award.
Right, right, exactly.
If we like pieces of the alternate, but maybe we wanna scale that back and find a middle ground between bid alternate and the base bid, it would be best to award base bid plus alternate, and then we work with Magny to, to do cost reductions from the, from the bid alternate. If we award the base bid and then do additions, based on that construction contract, we'll have to work through markup and things like.
The only thing, Erin, is with the alternate, there's a lot more bump outs, and that's more architectural versus just, so would they, they would have to go back in and do, I mean, it would have to be built different.
I mean, like, the base bid, does that say what color it's, is, like, what the concrete and the brick look like?
General color selections, because we're not sure what manufacturer we're getting from the precast, we don't finalize that yet, but we have a general range.
So I mean, like, the general range can be, there's wiggle room in the general colors.
Yeah, and again, I, I, at this point, we, we have a better idea of who our manufacturer's actually gonna, going to be, so we would need to sit down with them and look at what real options do they have. So I don't know how dark we can or can't get with the base bid manufacturer, but we would need to have.
Worst comes to worst, go ahead, go ahead. Mayor, if you just showed this in the exact two colors of the other option two, this paint, not saying, I mean, the other option is just darker brick and darker paint. This shouldn't be more for just a color change on this.
It might, depending on, on what's available, is what he's saying, but we can look at that.
There's really a range of standard colors typically, so if we go with something that's non-standard, it, I, I'd have to ask.
Paint is paint, right.
I don't wanna overpromise what we can and can't do, so.
Okay.
Worst comes to worst, can't we just spray paint it?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
You can, paint precast, a lot of the, a lot of the large, big box precast buildings you see off the highway, it's, it's a gray panel that they paint.
Yeah.
And mostly it's for speed of construction, you can paint precast, just keep in mind that's now maintenance down the road.
Yeah.
That's why sticking with a concrete color really minimizes your long-term maintenance, so, just.
Well, if we go, we don't do the alternate bid, we can still look at colors, and if we don't find anything, then we could still look at painting, which might not be the best alternative, but it's better than, it's not 280,000, so, all right.
I'm good with the base bid.
All right, so, we want to award, a question, council, do you want to award the treatment plant bid to Magny Construction?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so do I have a, a motion to award the water treatment plant bid to Magny Construction without, wait, hold on, you have to know what we're gonna be, with the alternate one, but not alternate two?
We don't want alternate one, alternate one takes out the clear.
Not selected either. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, it's the plus and minus thing, okay, I'm sorry.
Just the base bid.
So the base bid, and not, not removing the clear well and not doing alternate two.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there more discussion?
You could hear in deep thought, Claudia.
I will, I.
Stop thinking about paint.
I'm done.
Okay, Brian, okay.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, there's a resolution that is set up for you.
Okay, sorry.
With that combination, it's, it's, it's page, page 101, it's resolution 85-25.
No, it's not 101.
68, if you're on the one, if you're on the new one.
68, no, that's not, I think it's.
But it's, it's resolution number 85-25.
Oh, yeah.
And what, what that does is, awards the base bid without alternate one and alternate two, so.
Okay.
21329.
Okay. As you said, okay, so the motion was made.
Prove resolution number 8525 for the base bid without alternate one or without alternate two.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all right, any further questions, staff, we're good there, okay? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0, and we will work on the aesthetics, we'll work on that. All right, there you go. So now, we move on to, we have to call for a public hearing on our street reconstruction bonds, this is a little different than what we've done in the past, because we've always done the 429 bonds, which are, then you have to assess a minimum of 20% of the pro, of the project cost. These are bonds where we're not, some of the bonds are not going to be assessed, or there's not gonna be assessments, so, do you wanna?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and council, so yeah, this is, yeah, on packet, and there's a resolution associated with that, resolution number 8725, that basically states, you know, through the chapter 475 bond process we're doing for the 2026 street projects, we need to call for a public hearing on our street reconstruction plan, and the date that's been selected for that would be our council meeting on November 3rd at 6:30 PM.
Okay.
Publish that in the paper here to notice that, and, and have that on that, that date.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, then is there a motion calling for the public hearing relating to the adoption of a street reconstruction plan and issuance of the bonds for November 3rd at 6:30 here at City Hall?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. So next, we're gonna move on to install a four-way stop at Lotus Drive and Sunset Lane, is that you, Ms. Foskey?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, well, members of the council. So staff has received numerous complaints and requests for a four-way stop at the intersection of Lotus Drive and Sunset Lane to the north, Wolfberry Curve to the south, location is shown here on the map. On the next slide, it shows some of the issues that we're encountering, that drivers encounter, so this is westbound Lotus Drive as we approach Sunset Lane and Wolfberry, so there are three monuments within Lotus Trail there, that's impeding some of the, the sightlines. And then on the next slide, we show eastbound Lotus Drive, so as you're coming around the curve there, Sunset Lane will be to the left, Wolfberry Curve to the right, and pedestrians and vehicles are having difficult times seeing this eastbound Lotus Drive traffic through this intersection. And here's another perspective looking from Sunset Lane, so this is looking to the, to the west on Lotus Drive, so we see there's some, the trees, there's some decorative grasses, so there's a number of items that are impeding the sight distances, and, and the, the curve of the road is, is also hindering the sight distances. So we had a traffic engineer take a look at this, the, the traffic engineer did recommend that a four-way stop be installed, so there's already a stop condition on Sunset and Wolfberry, so the proposal for council this evening is to consider installing the stop conditions on Lotus Drive in both directions to make it a four-way stop. In addition to that, there would be some advanced warning signs, two permanent ones, and then we'd also have some temporary signage to alert drivers that there's a change in the traffic control ahead, and the cost of these signs is just over 500, and then there would be public works time to go out and install the sign, so we are, included in the packet is a resolution, should the council want to have those stop signs installed.
Thank you, and then, so we discussed this at the work session, and I also recommended or asked if we could also do some crosswalk striping, so that people can, so that drivers can be aware that pedestrians may be, may be crossing, so, any other questions or comments?
Just striping, no flashing lights, right?
Just striping, just striping, it, it just makes a, a vehicle more aware that there could be pedestrians crossing, and it'll just make it safer.
If, if I may have a point of clarity on that intersection, if we have it up there, do we want four crosswalks on there?
You only have two.
Yeah, okay.
After a pedestrian crossing, special traffic into a grass area with no landing.
With no pad ramp or, or island there, so just so you know, I wanted to point that out, so that.
So Gary, you would go from the east side of Sunset over to the west side, and then from the west side, or where?
Correct, there's only two directions you can go, you cannot put a crosswalk into an area with no landing.
You disconnect the sidewalk.
You connect it where the sidewalk connections are, the east-west, and then the north-south.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
That you can do.
Okay, yeah, all right. Any other concerns or questions? Okay, otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve the installation of the four-way stop at Lotus Drive and Sunset Lane and Wolfberry Curve.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Govern, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I didn't ask for comment, but I'll take one quick comment, we didn't think you would oppose.
No, thank you, thank you for coming in, this is what we were speaking, my name is Josie, I'm Ms. Williams, and I am at 45, 40 to Sunset Lane, so yes, I really appreciate this, just curious, how much more would it be to do the lights at the crosswalks? Is that significantly more?
I'm not sure, but that's not on our docket, and it's tonight, you got more than what you asked for, so, all right, all right.
Couple thousand.
Don't push her, I'm just kidding, all right. But, yeah, and there, and we can look at that at a later date, but I think right now we're gonna put in stop signs, there's gonna be lights on the stop signs, there's gonna be crosswalk striping, and we can look at further enhancements at a later date, so, all right, all right, so next we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I, I don't, I don't really have anything, we are gonna continue working with Representative Myers and Senator Johnson Stewart, and I reached out to both of them today, and Senator Johnson Stewart is looking to potentially meet next week, and Representative Myers, it's kind of an ongoing, constant conversation about bond, bonding, so we'll continue that, hopefully, it sounds like they're looking at a billion-dollar bonding bill is what we're hearing right now, with 600 million going to local government, so if that actually happens, there might be a, a chance, so. One thing I will note, I think I sent emails out about the LMCD open house, the Lake Minnetonka Conservation District open house, if anybody's interested in that, please let me know if we end up having more than, or three or more people there, we just gotta notice it, same with the Gillespie Center, 25th anniversary.
The 25th.
It's on the 25th of.
Are you gonna be there?
I am.
Okay, I can't.
I know.
I know.
If there's anybody else that's go, that, that is going to attend that, just let me know, and we can notice it accordingly, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other staff, do we have planning commission meeting, this, okay, anybody can, can somebody go? I can't, I will be out at home. It is the 28th of it. Monday, the 27th? Okay, Kathleen can do it.
There'll likely be a parks commission for that, too.
Okay. Which is at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
That's fine.
Okay.
As long as we can get a forum, we will do that, to do our CIP and.
Right.
All the annual stuff.
Okay, so, six o'clock, and then seven o'clock, so Kathleen will be there, thank you, thank you, Kathleen. Reports, Ryan, anything?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
No, Madam Mayor, just the Gillespie 25th anniversary on the 25th.
Okay.
Tickets are 25.
All right, should be a nice event.
They got a liquor license now.
All right. And?
No reports.
No reports, and?
Peter and I attended a personnel committee meeting about police officer, the work out on duty, the wages, and then you, myself and Jasper, attended the fire partnership meeting, and we discussed the pension, and it was basically just a broad overview, and then we will be discussing it more on the October 21st meeting, which I will be attending.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
Slow moving.
So what we have to do is, or what has to happen before we can even continue any more partnership, fire partnership meetings, is we have to figure out how to, they're, they're slightly different, the two pension plans are slightly different, and so they have to be the same, so we're trying to figure out how to make them equal, and, you know, it, it can be done, it's just, I'm gonna take some time and some, some maneuvering, so, we're, we're, we're still working on that, and then, yeah, I, I attended the Minnesota Mayor's Association Annual Fall Get Together, and it was very well-attended, and very interesting, we had, the speaker was about if you have issues on your council, or you have issues with residents, how can you kind of come to terms, I guess, is the best way, de-escalate a situation, so, but I said, we're pretty good here, so, we don't have to de-escalate very often, so, but that was a really good meeting, it's a good networking opportunity, and so on, and then fire partnership meetings, and, and I will be out for a little while, have to take care of my 93-year-old mother, so, that's all I have. So I guess that's it, if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.